The July 17, 2013 Meeting of the Hampton School Board will now come to order. Tonight, we have Sadira Glass, a rising sixth grader at Spratley Gifted Center, who will give our invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi, I'm Sadira Glass. I'm a fifth grade student at Tarant Elementary School. I would like to thank you for the honor of letting me present this to you tonight. Before I begin, I would like to tell you a few things you might want to know about me. Just recently, I won the Patroler of the Year Award. My favorite subject in school is reading, and one of my favorite hobbies is writing. Now to get on to the presentation. Tonight, I want to talk to you about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Dr. King inspires me because he never cared about the color of other people's skin. All his life, he tried to bring all races together as one big team and give us all equal rights. The four most important things everyone should know about Dr. King is that he cared about everyone. Even as a child, he played with everyone, no matter the color of their skin. In Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" speech, he said he wanted his kids to live in a world where segregation didn't exist, and we could all live together in peace and harmony. Later, in Dr. King's life, he won the Nobel Peace Prize for all of his work trying to bring everyone together in a peaceful manner. When you think of Martin Luther King Jr., what do you think of? When I think of him, I see him at a huge rally giving his "I Have a Dream" speech. A few ways Dr. King has influenced Hampton City Schools is that today we have schools where everyone is together. Sometimes, we might have a problem here or there, but when we think of Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" speech, we realize this color of our skin really doesn't matter. Today, everyone rides on the same buses, we all drink from the same water fountains, and eat together in the same cafeteria. Teachers of different races teach all the children together in the same classes in the same schools. I would like to end with a message for the school board members, teachers, parents, and students. The thing we can all learn from Dr. King is that we must all come together as a team, regardless of our color or race.
Sadira, come on back up to the podium for a second. First of all, I want to thank you. You were just delivered that perfectly, and your message was so inspiring. So, thank you. And I especially thank you for coming here during your summer vacation. So, have you enjoyed your time off so far? What have you done?
Well, I like to, um, I've been reading the Battle of the Books book for 2014, and I've been working on my math skills. I've been going swimming a lot with my sisters. That's basically it.
That sounds like, that sounds pretty nice to me. Now, I notice you have some people here with you. Would you like to introduce them?
Yes, this is my great-grandma, Sharon Johnson, and this is my youngest sister, Zoe Fieser.
Well, Sadira, I know you said that you are a Tarant student, but you are going into sixth grade.
Yes.
So, you'll be going where next year?
At Spratley.
Are you excited about that?
Yes.
Well, I think they're going to have a wonderful student in you, and you're getting ready for next year. So, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your summer.
Sadira, when you said you were studying your math, working on your math, I thought you were getting ready to say you were working on your masters. You sound like that. But I have to say, in all seriousness, that I fully comprehend that you wrote that speech yourself, and you probably proofread it and made sure it was right. And to have you speak about a guy like Dr. Martin Luther King, you had to break it from here in your heart. So, thank you much, dear.
All right, now Sadira, I have one other thing. Now, I want you to come up here on the stage. Because earlier in the year, we were going to recognize Sadira for receiving the award from AAA as Safety Patroler of the Year, and so she wasn't able to be with us. So, I actually have the certificate right here, and it says, "Congratulations to Sadira Glass from Tarant Elementary School, AAA Tidewater Patroler of the Year." So, I'd like to present that to you now. Remember to keep up that math work over the summer in your reading, okay? All right. Also, before we go on to any further business, I'd like to recognize the fact that we have a number of people in the audience tonight that are from our Hampton City Schools ODU cohort group. Would all of you please stand? These individuals are our aspiring new administrators, and part of their coursework is to come to a school board meeting. And so, I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize you and to thank you for your dedication to professional growth, and I hope you enjoy the meeting tonight. Okay, I will now entertain a motion for the board to appoint one of its members as chair for the 2013-14 school year. Mr. Kilgore?
Dr. Shiflett, I move to nominate Martha Mugler as chair of the board.
Second. Moved by Joe Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Phillips, that Martha Mugler be appointed as chair for the 2013-14 school year. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, call for the vote.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion passes, and I will gladly turn the gavel back over, and congratulations.
At this time, the school board shall elect one of its members vice chairman.
Madam Chair, I move to nominate Joe Kilgore as vice chair.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Mrs. Phillips that we elect Mr. Joe Kilgore as vice chairman. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
We now will take a recommendation from the superintendent regarding the clerk of our board.
I recommend that Carolyn Bowers be appointed as clerk of the board.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent to nominate Carolyn Bowers as board and Susan Barr as vice, as deputy clerk of the court, of the board. You're in charge anyway, Carolyn.
Second again.
Okay. It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Harper that we appoint Ms. Carolyn Bowers as clerk of the school board, and that the bond of $10,000 shall be in keeping with past practice. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Bowers. We also, at this time, will take a recommendation from the superintendent regarding the appointment of our deputy school board clerk.
I recommend that Susan Barr be deputy school board clerk.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mrs. Phillips that we elect Ms. Barr, Susan Barr, as the deputy clerk of the school board. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. The school board shall fix a time, date, and place for holding regular meetings for the ensuing year, and there is an attachment with the proposed calendar.
Madam Chair, I moved to hold school board meetings on the first and third Wednesday of each month at 6:30, with the first meeting being held at Jones Magnet Middle School, and the other meetings being held at Rupert Sargent Building, with the calendar as attached to board docs.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Phillips that we... Well, you said a lot in that motion. That we hold school board meetings on the first and third Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM, with the first meeting being held at Jones Magnet Middle School, and the other meeting being held at the Rupert Sargent Building, with the calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. The school board shall now approve a designee of the superintendent to attend meetings of the school board and represent the superintendent in absence of the superintendent.
I recommend Dr. Patricia Johnson to be my designee.
Is there a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Harper and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that Dr. Patricia Johnson serve as the designee, the superintendent's designee, until the next reorganizational meeting in 2014. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Johnson. At this time, the school board shall appoint a student liaison and alternate. Is there a motion?
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve Ja'Ree Bolton as student liaison and, do we do them separately? You want to do them separately, or?
It can be all one.
Amelia Flannery as the alternate.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we approve Ja'Ree Bolton as a student liaison and Amelia Flannery as the alternate. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Notion carries. At this time, we will swear in our student liaison, and so... Ja'Ree, if you'll join me up there. I do solemnly affirm, you can repeat after me.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As the school board student liaison.
As the school board student liaison.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I believe, Ms. Bolton, did you have someone in the audience here with you tonight? Would you like to introduce?
Yes, ma'am. I have my mother, Diane Bolton, my brother, Paul Anthony, as well as, I also have some church members, my pastor, Gail Roberts House, a member, Linda Rivers, Marie O'Neill. I also have Mrs. Keisha Samuels, Alana Samuels, Jason Samuels, and Kenny Tyuskin in the back.
Got some people over here, too.
Of course. My principal, Mr. William Beverley, and assistant principal, Mr. Bruce Godwin are also here. Miss Kathy!
Ja'Ree, I think you have a fan club.
Just a little, just a little.
Well, it's wonderful to have support.
Yes, it absolutely is. You come well-supported. I will say that the school board has the privilege of interviewing students for the student liaison position every year, and we've been looking as a board for ways to engage our liaison in new and different ways, and so we'll be seeing, I think, a lot of Ja'Ree this year, and she was a delight to interview, and we're looking quite forward to working with her this year.
Ms. Mugler, excuse me, this must be a special night because she even has her school resource officer here tonight. Make sure she's safe. Officer Williams.
We move on tonight to our consent agenda, which consists of items 4.01 through 4.07. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move now to superintendent and staff reports, and I will turn things over to Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. First report this evening is something that's critically important to a school division, and that is of keeping its public and its internal audience informed. And so, Ms. Anne Stevens Cherry will come forward, please.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, members of the school board, members of the division leadership team, members of the Hampton City Schools family. I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about communications, public relations, and marketing with a focus on a communication plan for PEG TV. But I'd first like to give you a brief overview of just what that public relations and marketing arena looks like. All of our meetings that are held with the administrators I will name within that PR component are held as a team. It's like our invocation little girl said today, "We need to be one big, great team," and that's how we treat it in public relations and marketing, because we all have the bottom line of creativity, deadlines, quick turnarounds, and quality products. So, we were, first of all, we talked about it, we were going to do an umbrella of public relations and marketing, and then show you the kinds of things that come under it, but an umbrella suggests that you're being protected from something, and we wanted to make sure we had not a less-than-stellar explanation, so we decided to go with what we call a circle of services. First of all, I'd like to start with the fact that even though it's not here, I'd like to remind you that in that public relations and marketing arena, we serve as a news bureau for the Hampton School Division, which means that the executive director of marketing and public relations also serves as the official spokesperson for the school division. We also handle event planning, such as citizen of the month. The director serves as the four-year Freedom of Information Officer, and coordinates and administers all of the division's creative instruction and customer service programs. And I want to tell you how important customer service is. I just returned last week from presenting at the National School Public Relations Association, where I was asked to do a presentation on our award-winning Dove customer service program. My presentation was to take place from 11:30 to 12:30 a.m. I know PR people as well as others get hungry, so I expected to see nobody in that room from 11:30 to 12:30, except the people from Virginia, who would be there to support. The room held 96 people, there was standing room only. The first question I asked was how many of you have a genuine customer service program in your school division? I got one hand raised, which told me why the other 95 people were there. But I can tell you that it was so important, a subject, that afterwards several people stayed back and talked to me about it, with two people, one from Jacksonville, Florida, and another one from Charlotte, North Carolina, saying that they had been asked by their superintendents to make customer service, number one, Dr. Johnson, on their strategic plan. So, we have incorporated in our strategic plan, so I was real pleased to see that other school divisions are following suit. But, back to our circle of services, I'd like to start with the HCS receptionist. That's Pat Satchel. She is the one who serves as our first line of communication for Hampton City Schools. When people call in to our main number, they want answers, they want accurate information, and they want to be treated with respect, and they want somebody to answer the phone. And Pat Satchel does all of that, from telling people anything and everything about every department in this school division, as well as every school. She handles calls when somebody sees an ambulance in front of a school, which is why we keep the lines of communication open. And she also handles those parents who want to know are we closing schools because they saw a flake fall, a snowflake fall. And she handles it very well, so people do respect the fact that she treats them as part of the Hampton City Schools family. Our graphics department, next, is headed out by Matt Hauser. Matt's office is staffed by four professional graphic designers. Now, while public relations is part of what they do every day and marketing, their eye is always on the classroom. We have put a special emphasis on working with teachers so as to provide them with a wide array of visuals to enhance instruction in Hampton City Schools. Also in that department, one of the designers doubles as the official Hampton City Schools photographer. Her name is Lisa Height. She does a great job, not only for all the pictures we use in all of our in-house publications, but she's also often been asked by members of the Daily Press to shoot pictures that they need for their publications as well. Next, our HCS webmaster, that's Vicky Carper. She, too, comes out of the graphics department. A little background, years ago, when Dr. Kennedy was superintendent, he asked the public relations department to design a Hampton City Schools website. Seems odd, we're talking in 2013 about designing a Hampton City Schools website, but that was back in the day. Now, I didn't know anything about designing a website, but I figured Vicky Carper would, so I asked her, "What do you know about designing a website?" Because the superintendent's made it clear, that's what he would like to have. She says, "Nothing, but you give me somebody who can teach me, and I'll have it." We ended up hooking her up with a person from the Daily Press, actually, who did their website. He said, "If you give me one week with her, I will make sure she can design a website and oversee a website." It took Vicky Carper two days. And I want to tell you that we have heard from Human Resources and others that this is our most effective communication piece. This is our most effective marketing piece, because it reaches everywhere, which is why it's called the World Wide Web. Also, I'd like to point out that our website, which we go over all the time to make sure it is accurate, that it is up to date, it is always ever-changing and fluid, we're very proud to announce, as you know, that our website received an A-plus rating from the Sunshine Review for transparency in government. That's a big deal to us, because we always want to be as transparent as we can. Next, with our Printing and Records Management Department, that comes under the guise of Marty Wood. You may, you may remember that two years ago, we merged these two departments, and it has been an excellent merger. The Printing and Records Services Department, they're in charge of printing and doing the publications for everybody and every department and every school in this division. In addition, that department oversees the retention and the destruction of all the public records in Hampton City Schools. You just can't throw them in the trash can. There are governmental guidelines as to how to dispose of records, and they are always on top of professional development training to make sure we're doing it as it should be done. Next, our Facebook administrator is Carolyn Bowers. Carolyn's official title is Public Relations Specialist. Her other official title is Clerk of the Board. Now, she has inherited the title of Facebook Administrator, and while it's not official in any paperwork in Human Resources, she has been assigned it for one simple reason. Dr. Shiflett said, "I want a Facebook page, and I want it to be up to date, and I want it to be nice." And I said, "Yes, ma'am." But I think one of the things people should always understand is, just as you know your strengths, you should all so know your weaknesses. And I knew I was not a fan of Facebook, simply because most people are not fans of things they don't understand. So, I asked Carolyn Bowers, "Can you do this?" She said, "Absolutely." She has done it, she's done a great job, and since October 2011, we had 1,337 likes, reaching a weekly total of over 5,000 people, with a potential of reaching 300,000. And now to our Athletics Department. In Athletics, which is headed by Beth Mayer, we've made a concentrated effort to market the program. The kids know how to get on the field, they know how to get on the courts, the coaches know what they're doing, the ADs as well. But we wanted to market the public relations aspect of our athletic program, so, under this guise, we've got corporate sponsors, which until a few years ago were unheard of. We've got special theme nights we use to enhance and encourage the attendance at our games, and Beth Mayer also ensures that all of our Virginia High School League regulations are followed, and that our coaches concentrate not only on success, but sportsmanship and respect, which is why on August 3, you will see this ad running in the Daily Press. It says, "You can't beat these guys." And we wanted to use that because we're not talking about games. "You can't beat these guys when it comes to sportsmanship, safety, and respect." And then, of course, it puts in the Darling Stadium schedule and information about corporate sponsors. But this was very key as we turned the corner on the marketing this year for our sports program. Our coaches, as you know, whether it's football, basketball, volleyball, tennis, track, they are all very, very competitive, as they should be, which is interesting, because I had several people when they saw this. people, when they saw this ad, the drafter of it, say, I know you photoshopped those coaches in there. Actually, we did not. We asked them to appear at Darling Stadium at a certain date, at a certain time. They showed up, they were on time, they took a myriad of pictures, and it works well because it shows that while winning is important, there's some other key aspects that we want to hang our hat on. So yes, they are competitive, but first and foremost, they are professionals, and this is the way they handle that. Lastly, our PEG TV, which is tonight what you asked us to focus on, has come a long way. We're doing some great things and under our new director, Andy Foley, I'm excited to present him to share those with you. Andy.
Thank you, Anne. Madam Chair, School Board, Superintendent Linda Shiflett, and DLT, I'm excited to be here to share some information on PEG TV. And the question is, what is PEG TV? PEG is an acronym that's used in the television industry all across the world for public education and government. And when we consolidated with the city in 2010, that's when we became PEG TV. So this is our three stations. The Hampton City School Station on Cox is Channel 46, and the City of Hampton, Channel 47, and our local sports channel on Channel 48 on Cox, and then below the Verizon channels for those. We'll start off by concentrating on Hampton City Schools and some highlights of what we're doing in the department. And it's fairly simple. We provide videos for all the departments. I just had an email come across my desk a couple days ago about the Guidance Department wanting a video for high schoolers coming into high school. And I was like, wow, that's a great idea. And it was from a counselor at Hampton. And I said, well, why don't we put together a video that would be broadened for all the high schools, and then we do individual sections that highlight specific parts of each school so not all the, any of the schools are left out. And so we're moving along with a project like that. But those are just kind of the things that come across my desk from different areas of the school system. Let's see here. So everybody knows we cover Citizen of the Month. And what we're working on with Citizen of the Month is next year, finding a way to provide every student a DVD of the program through a sponsorship or through the, through our department, just paying for the disc and the copying to give out to the students. I think they deserve it. And some of those children call us saying, I have DirecTV, how do I get a DVD? And we charge them $5, and I just, most time, I just hand it to them. Because I just, they, it's well deserved, I believe. And we've been posting most, last year we posted them all on Facebook, or not Facebook, on YouTube. And this year, we put the graduations on YouTube for the first time. We're working with CTE very closely at the state level and the local level here. And the state level had to deal with us doing a video for CTE that was a, I gotta find my note here. Was a grant for competitive best practices, and it's the only one in the United States that's been made, and it can be found on the Virginia Department of Education website under their career cluster, STEM cluster program. The CTE, working with them, we've been doing promo videos on the academic academies and the AAA and the IDEA. And these programs are exciting. They're putting kids, getting kids excited for the workplace, they're getting kids excited for going to college and preparing them for things that definitely I went for when I came out of high school. The school morning announcements, those are done at every single school. And we help out with the people that are the techs that are working with that, and we're called out if they have a camera problem or a video problem. But I think we can do more with the school announcements by maybe spotlighting them on our channel. Have like a student spotlight section that was, that's an hour long, which would contain other student spotlight things as well. Those kids that do those morning announcements, when I go and see them, they are more than excited about doing those morning announcements. They're not walking in going, oh, I gotta do the morning announcements. They're like stoked. They get to talk and be seen throughout the whole school. And I want to take it to a level where maybe they can be seen throughout the whole city. It'll let you know what's going on in the school. You have the kids producing a small newscast that gives you a little bit of information. And then, of course, we're here tonight, we do school board meetings, and we support all the audio visual stuff at all the schools, all the administration, administrative programs, their functions. Post all our school events and different happenings on our message board, which runs on and off during the day, mostly through the night. And then our biggest asset is free, and that's YouTube. And we are using it as much as we can. And we can embed it into our website. It costs us nothing. There's no bandwidth restriction on our part, and it's available to almost anybody. So that's a major asset for us. And we maintain it, we do the quality control on it. If somebody wants a video on YouTube, they send it to us, we do the correct compression that's necessary for it, and then we post it to the site. A new program we have is called School Notes. I don't know if anybody has seen an episode. We're on our fourth one, our, so we're in our fifth one in production right now. But when we were coming up with this idea for this news program, I was talking to Krista Campbell, who's on that camera. She's the producer of School Notes. You already have the answer in front of you. We were like, what is our mission for this program? And we sat and thought about it, and we said, you know, it's about every child, every day, whatever it takes. And we want to show people what it takes. We want to show everybody, every child, and we want to show everybody every day. So we said, that's going to make it work for us. We talked about how we were going to deliver. And we had cameras that were all capable of high definition, and so I said, let's switch them. Let's start doing this stuff in HD. Cox isn't going to deliver us in HD, but when we upload it to YouTube, you just click that little button in the bottom corner, and you can watch our School Notes program in full 1080. And it looks gorgeous. It's unbelievable, it's an unbelievable program. I am so happy with it. Our sets have been worked, we've worked with Matt Hauser, who's here with us. Thanks, Matt. We kind of give them a gist of what we want, and you'll see one of my crew drawings here in a minute. But they print our sets. We have one printed for Round Robin, which is a show we do for the city with Robin McCormick. And then the set that we do sports time on was done by the graphics department. And so when we got into doing School Notes, that's my little drawing there, that I sent Matt, and he was like, thanks. And there was a lot of explaining with that email. But, and then I showed him this. Now, it looks like a Big Kids Erector set, and that's basically what it is. And to be honest, that is the old WVC Daybreak set. And that was donated to us. Don Strauss has ties to WVC, and he was nice enough to get this for us. And we've been using these parts for all sorts of different sets. And so Matt came back, and now it looks like that. And that's probably a $3,000 set. It cost us about $300, held together with magnets and some tube lights. And it's gorgeous. It looks incredible. And it's right in our studio. If you want to go in, take a look at it, you'll be like, man, it's kind of shady looking, but on camera, it looks great. That's how TV works. Like I said, our pilot episode was March 28th, and we were in our fifth episode of production. We're using student reporters, and the student liaison is going to be getting involved. She just found out. And so she can do some things, and we're trying to find some people at a few other schools. But I was gracious enough to get one of our student reporters here, and he did the invocation here a few years back, did a I Had a Dream thing. And his name is Xavier Williams, and he wants to work in government. And he told me not to tell you this, but he's an avid school board watcher. And that I really believe that you have a future liaison on your hands. And he has a natural ability when the camera's rolling. It's, to watch him speak in front of a camera, that's why I work behind the camera, because I'm not big on talking in front of the camera. So I'm going to show you a clip that he did, and then he's going to come up and talk a little bit.
Our next story is about students earning rewards for good behavior. Let's take to the hallways and see what reporter Xavier Williams has to share.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. I'm reporting from Jones Magny Middle School, where students are being rewarded today for their great behavior. Today is the last day for all students to turn in their paws for great prizes. So let's see how these students earn their paws.
Well, you had to like participate in class and do what you're normally supposed to do, like be quiet when the teacher tells you to cooperate with your group and do your work.
Sometimes if we get good grades or participation, you know, raise your hand a lot.
Basically, they just try to get you to behave, and you behave, and they give you paws. You could come here and buy stuff like an eraser. And most kids buy Teacher's Lounge lunch. We go in Teacher's Lounge and eat lunch and watch TV. But that's the cool thing about Pall Mart, they always know what kids want.
Where did the idea of Pall Mart come from?
Well, the PBAAS team here at Jones decided that the students needed something to reward them for their good behavior. And so we brainstormed a couple ideas, and Pall Mart was the one that superseded all the other ideas. And so we went with that, and it's been doing very well.
What do you want the students to learn from Pall Mart?
That when you do good things, good things happen.
Reporting from School Notes, I'm Xavier Williams. Thank you, Mr. Foley. Good evening to the Hampton City School Board members and Hampton City Schools administration and staff. I'm Xavier Williams, and I attend Jones Magny Middle School and will be a seventh grader starting in September. Last year, I served as SCA Vice President and gave reports on the morning announcements. When I was a fifth grader at Booker Elementary School, I did the, I read an excerpt of Dr. Martin Luther King's I Have a Dream speech during the student invocation. Last year, I was interviewed for a story on School Notes about my speech and how I prepared. Since then, I have served as a reporter for School Notes and did one. So far, I have learned how to talk directly into a camera properly and how to edit a show from Ms. Campbell. One day, I hope to work in government and make a difference in my community and country. Thank you. Now, at this time, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Paul Rowe, the anchor of School Notes. Mr. Rowe is not just a local television personnel, he is a civics teacher right here at Jones Magny Middle School. He has been a teacher for 21 years, starting his first eight years at Spratley. Mr. Rowe has been a sportscaster for eight years on the local sports channel, LSC Channel 48. He has contributed to many projects, including WHCS Memorial Minute, The Journey, promotional videos, and The Warrior Classic. Mr. Rowe has volunteered his own time to help the staff of Channel 46, whether he lends a hand, his voice, or a promo, or comes in during the summer to anchor School Notes. He's a jack-of-all-trades, willing to help with anything. At this time, I present to you Mr. Rowe, the anchor of School Notes.
Good evening. I'm not so sure about that jack-of-all-trades. I have been teaching for 21 years, and I've been blessed for the last seven to be part of the WHCS family. It's a great crew, a great staff, and I have had so much fun working there, you wouldn't believe it. Most of the time, I have been an announcer for the sports station, LSC. But when Andy and Krista came up with this idea of School Notes, he came to me and asked if I would mind anchoring this. Well, to me, that was a new challenge, a little bit scary, but it was something I felt like was going to be fun to do, especially if it dealt with what was going on in the Hampton City School System with the children and the teachers. That was the good part. This newscast has been just something that I've found fun. That's the best word I can tell you about it. We get information from teachers, we get information from students, we get information from administration, we get information from people in the community that have heard things in our school and think that we need to put it out there on TV. And that's one of the good things. We can sit here all day and all night and tell people about what's going on in the school system. But now, we can show them. We can show them what happens, the good things that happen. People don't know what goes on in the school system, but with School Notes, they can find out. All they have to do is watch it. And we're getting the ideas from the people that know what's going on. So we share it with the community. We have a blast. We get together, Ms. Campbell, this lady, you guys need to give her a big hand at the end here because she does all of the work. She gets people going out to all the schools, filming the information, scripting the information, bringing it back to her desk. If you've got a minute when you leave here tonight, go to her office and look at that desk. It's piled this high with information about what is now new in the City of Hampton School System. And that includes today, even during the summer, because we don't just shut down for those three months. You continue to work in the school system, and there's a lot of preparation to get ready for the new school year. And she has all of this, she has to put into something that you can understand, that you can see, and that we can put on TV. It's a collaborative type assignment. Randy Begoli is one of the directors for this, and he is so instrumental in helping us get everything together and making sure that we use the proper words when we look at that teleprompter and talk about what we're supposed to be talking about. It's just a great thing to do. But the key is, we're showing people, showing them that's important. What also is important is, like Andy said, you can find this on the TV stations on TV, or you can go to the website. Most people don't realize that. You can go to the website, there's several ways. You can watch the TV on the website by going to the WHCS logo in the top right-hand corner, or you can drop down on the Hampton City Schools site on the left-hand side and click on the videos, and that will take you to YouTube, which Andy has told you is free. And you can see all of the information right there. Last time I checked, four of these School Notes videos were online at that time, and as you said, we're working on a fifth one right now. You have to remember that what you see is what's going on. It's every child, every day, whatever it takes. And if this is what it takes, we're doing something good for the City of Hampton. Now, remember one thing, when you do watch it in the website for YouTube, as Andy said, please watch it in HD, 1080 HD, because that's the best quality. And that's what the City of Hampton School System gives to you, the best quality, whether it be with every child, every day, it's whatever it takes. At this time, we're going to see a few of the clips from the latest and the past School Notes. Thank you. Thank you. Hello and welcome to School Notes. I'm Paul Rowe. The first robotics competition requires the club to design a robot to perform the latest challenge. This year, the team designed a robot to climb a pyramid and shoot flying discs through a target area.
I was planting some bagels. Took the shovel and I digged a hole, so it's big. And then this lady came and take this plant, and she put it in the hole, and then we put the hole back together on the plant.
Our mission is to get students to behave like scientists, to be scientists. In order to do that, you've got to get the equipment in their hands.
It's a different type of movement, because in marching band, you have to stand still. Steel drum band is the complete opposite.
Stephen now travels to Richmond four days a week after school to train with Coach Lynn at Gym Quest Gymnastics. He spends a lot of time on the road and somehow manages his schoolwork in addition to his activities.
We hope everyone is enjoying the summer. Please, stay safe. We're working hard to ensure that when students come back, we're ready for them. Thanks for joining us. And as always, it's every child, every day, whatever it takes.
Thank you. And I couldn't do that without all the hard work from my employees. They give 110%. And thank them now. Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Don. All you, everybody just does a great job. All right. And I just wanted to add something to that open that was done. We had an intern last year, or this past year, from Kickitán. And they were having a hard time placing her. So she sent her to us, and we found things for her to do. And she helped Krista with that open. She did all the drawing. She did the stop-motion animation. She helped us with those things. And then there was two or three other video projects that she created graphics for. She's a very talented young lady named Trishell, and she's off to South Carolina Savannah School Design, which I'm very proud of her. So let's talk about where we want to go to be beyond this. We want to get into the academic mode. We want to be showing off our academics. We want to be embracing what the teachers and the students are doing other than on a football field or in other events that are sport-related. We want to get into the classroom and the academic banquet. That's something that we want to definitely get in on next year. And then academic challenges. And then I think our invocation person was talking about Battle of the Books, things like that. Show parents that these things are happening, and it's not just sports-related. And when we do the news, the news is definitely showing what's going on in the classroom. We are really trying to focus that on the classroom things. When we talk about fine arts, I think our community was rated the greatest place to learn music just recently. And we have to be covering that stuff. We have band, we have drama, we have all sorts of different things happening in the fine arts program that definitely need to be covered. When Kickitán does Romeo and Juliet, it's something we need to be there for. And not just to cover the show, we've got to talk to the people. Talk to the director. Talk to the mains. Talk to the people that are there, because it's not just about they putting on, they're putting on a performance. It's about the learning process that went along with that performance. Been working with Vivian Greasy and Kelly D. with the band stuff. And they're very excited about getting us on board to cover some of these new things. Student-teacher success stories. Those are things like creative instruction winners of that award. And students that are doing the Dove Award winners, the Taking Action Awards. If somebody's in the newspaper, if there's a story that we didn't quite get, it's something that we can definitely grab and do an individual story. Instead of being a news piece, do an individual story that's maybe five minutes long instead of a short two-minute news piece. Do something a little more in-depth for these success stories that are happening every day practically in Hampton City Schools. Like I said, we'd like to build a partnership with the academic academies. I've been working closely with Jesse White. He's very excited. And I've been speaking with the teacher at Phoebus, who's going to be teaching broadcasting. And I think y'all just did the book for that class, passed the book for the class. I haven't had a chance to look at that, but I definitely want to get those students coming into our doors. We're going to be making some upgrades in our studio that will put our studio in a place where, when those students are graduating high school, they could walk into a production facility and be working with the same level of digital equipment that would be in another facility when they leave to go to college or just to work. And that's one of the things we want to partnership with. And then over at Kickitán, they're doing the architectural and applied arts. And those are types of things that we would like to encase into a spotlight, where these kids are creating things. There are all sorts of landscaping and industrial drawing, mechanical drafters, textile designers, costume designers, and people making clothes. It just blows my mind the stuff that they're going to be doing in that school. And I'm a part of the Site Council Advisory Planning Group at Kickitán and Phoebus. So I'm going to try to be a part of integrating those with us so we can get what those people are doing on our channel and in a spotlight kind of sense. Also, when we got to talking about fashion, we started talking about, well, if these kids are making fashion, it'd be really nice at the end of the year to put on like a cool fashion show that you could televise, and it would give the kids something to strive for, because they see these hot fashion shows on TV all the time. And we could do something like that with the students and get them motivated, get a teacher motivated, get people pumped up. It's their first year for this stuff, and I really want these things to succeed and for them to work out great. Back to Phoebus with the broadcasting and multimedia. They're going to be doing script writing, writing in general, editing video. All this stuff requires mathematics. It requires English. I mean, it all goes back to the core functions of schooling, your core subjects. And so they'll be almost having to take the class twice. So they'll have English here, and then they'll be taking a writing portion for scripting and things of that sort. So it's kind of helping them in two ways. But they're having to take their core subjects and move them forward with these projects. So we want to continue to use YouTube for all this stuff. And then we want to start a new show, and it's something that really hasn't been done, that I know of, and we're going to try it. And we want to call it Wired In. And it's something that would take two people from closely related points of view and have them discussing a certain subject. And it would be like, almost like a guest host that would rotate and with a semi-perspective on the subject. So I was thinking, like, if we were talking security, we'd have two people from security, one a supervisor, one maybe somebody from school. School security is very important. Have two people talking about that. You get twice the information, and plus, you're getting it from two people that are professionals at it. You've got one person that's not just sitting there asking questions, shaking their head. You've got two people that are discussing school security. And you can get a lot out of that. And it should show our parents and our viewers and anybody that's interested in coming to Hampton, how our schools are safe and things of that sort. That's just one scenario for this program that I wanted to talk about. Again, that was my drawing. So, and then I sent it to Mr. Hauser, and that came back. Thank you, Matt. So that's what we're working on. We're working on the set now, and we're hoping to start production in September, get something lined up, and do a pilot in September and hope it works. We have several ideas to go on for that. Next up, we need to get more educational content on those channels. That's a big goal for me. These kids need to be able to watch something and learn something at the same time. And we need to motivate them to watch by being in those schools. And with them seeing us in those schools and them seeing their friends on the channel, that will draw them. And when you start drawing them, they'll watch a program and then hopefully watch the next program. That's what all the broadcasters are trying to get you to do. So basically, we want to be able to promote our original Hampton City Schools programs any way possible, newspaper. Sonny over in the sports department, he puts all of our sporting events that were airing on Channel 48 in the sports column every day. So if you see Hampton and Kickitán in 1986 or playing basketball, it'll be on our channel. We want to take programs that are featured and draw from there to promotional videos that would take the viewer to information land. So if they're watching School Notes, and their daughter or son was part of School Notes, and School Notes goes off, the very next thing that comes on is promo for Idea. And hopefully, they're tuned in long enough to see the Idea promo, and they say, "Hey, that's something that you might be interested in," or AAA, or the medical and biosciences. We have promotional videos for all those programs, and then we're making more. I mean, we have this transparency award. We'd like to make a promo on that for community awareness. So we're just, we're trying to find ways to keep the school system promoted positively and to draw people in. Some of you may watch some of our weekend programming. It's old movies, things of that sort. It catches a different audience, might catch an uncle or somebody that, then again, right after that show goes off, promos about the school district. And if they want to watch the movie that comes on after that, then they've gained some information. Continue to inform over the message board. And then this student spotlight I keep speaking of, I mean, a one-hour block that would air during the day, that would just be a spotlight on what students are doing in the classroom, what students are doing during the morning announcements, what students are doing in the career and technical section, what students are doing in band, what students are doing Just a section, almost like MTV, well, that used to be MTV, where in the bottom corner, you'd have like the person's first name, the school they go to, the name of the project. And it would just go cycle through different little programs that these kids have produced, say, at Phoebus, or they produce in our studio. Or if it's art or sculpture, we can go shoot it, video of it, and place it in the spotlight. We started doing this about a month ago. We're going around from school to school, shooting a lot of video of all the schools. And we're going to have every school with its own minute and a half to two-minute piece that shows off the schools. And on our website, there'll be a link. So if somebody wants to move to Hampton and they're not in Hampton, they can say, "What's that school look like? What's Bethel look like? What's Phoebus look like? Any school. What's Jones look like?" They click, and they see exterior shots. I have the guys shooting from across the street, so they know what the roads are like. And just getting classrooms, showing labs that are full of computers, and getting these put together so we can help sell Hampton City Schools. The realtors are going to love this. You are going to love it. We're going to get kids in Hampton, and hopefully, our numbers start going up from it. Okay, the city. That's part of our agreement with them. So we've been shooting these round robin shows, and we've done over 200 to date, and they have been, about 20% of them have been on location, and the other percent have been done in the studio. We provide the audiovisual support for them at council chambers and other city functions. We do their council meetings, shoot, edit, schedule all their programming. I mean, this is all part of what we were, what's in the agreement for us to do for them. This wasn't. We're just doing it to be nice. And it's been a pleasure to work with the city. I thought it was going to be bumpy, but it's actually going quite well. I am very happy with how things are running so smooth. So we're doing archival and things for their broadcast content. We update their message board. We're in control of that. They send us the content, and we do the control of it. So that's the city. Then we get to sports. And this is what it is, 24 hours of Hampton. It's awesome. People love it. Go to Big Waltz and go watch us over at Big Waltz. It's great. And our archives go back all the way to 1985, and it's been a huge hit. And we're going to do continued live tape coverage of football, basketball, soccer, baseball, softball, field hockey, things that we've always done, except now, we're going to expand a little bit. We're going to get some volleyball in there, some swimming, wrestling, tennis, and we're going to try to spread it out, try to get a little more reach on these sports, because there's more to sports than just football. Continue to do Sports Time, which is, I don't know if any of y'all have seen that. That's with Bob Hints. He gets all the oldies in and some of the newbies. We've had all the ADs in to interview and some former students that have been very successful, one being Carl, Mr. Carl Francis, works for the NFL. And is that correct? Okay. And over 150 episodes to date, and we're still... And over 150 episodes to date and we're still trucking along with it. So that's kind of an overview, not brief one, sorry. So we have, we do have a small technical future. Right now, we're at like 30% digital and 70% analog, which is not very efficient. I want to turn those numbers around. I want to take it and get this analog equipment out of here. One, it draws a lot of power. Two, it produces a lot of heat and we are on a mission to save energy. And so if we can get this digital equipment in, we are going to be saving money in the long run. The digital equipment's gone down in price. It's gotten very affordable to start switching over to HD. And that's our, our plan for now is to invest in our picture quality and get our production truck updated to HD, get our studio updated to HD and be able to do live production in HD, which is going to be a lot of fun and look really good and be a big asset for the Hampton City Schools family, especially when you start teaching this stuff in classrooms. We can get those kids in our studio, in our production truck, get the stuff in their hands and let them do what they do in the real world. We want to try to get us so where we have our own applications. We'd like to be a Roku app or Apple TV app or other IP-based devices. Smart TVs are, are the thing. IPTV is the thing. People, I mean, you can watch us anywhere in the world with an application. Our stream will come up and we'll have dedicated content that would be on demand. It won't be our entire video library, but it would be School Notes from the past and a few other key programs that people can watch on demand. And we're really looking forward to this. And lastly, I'd like to use the model that Marty used in the print shop where she used a Google shopping cart and make it where people can download our archives. If somebody wants a game from 1987, 1988, they can go to our Google site and download that in an MPEG4 format that's been encoded beautifully and they can watch it on their media player of any type. And it will bring the price down. Right now, we're selling DVDs for $15. Yes, $15. And then each additional disc is 10. And we're going to try to roll this out at about $5, $6 a download. And, and it's like, this, I want to try to make it as cost-effective as possible for our community. These videos have been sitting on, on hardware for a long time. So that's what we'd like to do. We cannot go to iTunes because you have to use a third-party vendor to encode all your video. And since we've already encoded it all, we're not going to pay somebody to encode it again just to get it on iTunes. So there's other sites that will host that for us and maybe, John Eagle's here, maybe he'll host it, maybe. So, but that's kind of what I've got going on. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Questions from board members? Mrs. Henry?
It's a shame you don't like your work, Andy. Production ideas floating all the time. I'm so pleased that you're doing a lot with the career and technical. I think it's, it's great to have features on all the academies and I hope that will grow. I think so often our young people don't realize all the wonderful opportunities. You talked about fashion design and, you know, just endless, endless career opportunities right here in high school for free so that you find out what you want to do before you go to college and don't be like the typical kid who spends six years getting a four-year degree because you had no idea what you wanted to do before you got there. So everything we can do to have those spotlights is, is wonderful. And then I, I keep thinking, there's a whole group of people who don't have the opportunity to join us in the daytime for school, adults who, gee, maybe wish they had not been better at Algebra I or whatever. And I hope that as you work with departments, you'll work with folks like the Performance Learning Center and Adult Ed and see what are the most in-demand things. There's so many areas where somebody would like to be able to tune in, even when it's SOL remediation time and the parent has something at home and they're worried about, how can I help my child get ready for this SOL test? I know they're doing it at school, but he forgets to bring the stuff home. If you can click on Peg TV and here is third grade English reading review and you can do that, those are just, they're endless production. We'll have you working 48 hours a day instead of only 24. But I, I think it's, it's so exciting what we can do and what we can offer people. And the nice thing about having it on video stream is that if you normally broadcast this at three o'clock and that's not when somebody wants to get it, with the video options, you can do it anytime. That's what the, the Kaplan idea is. I can look at this calculus lesson over and over and over and over again. Well, I could look at an SOL review lesson over and over and over again, too. And so I, I just, I know you all do a tremendous amount with a little and keep dividing up those loaves and fishes or whatever you're doing to make it possible down here. But we really appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from other board members? Okay, thank you very much for that comprehensive report. And we're looking forward to visiting information land with you.
Okay.
And thank you, Ms. Steven Cherry, tonight for, for opening things up for us. And Mr. Rowe and Mr. Xavier Williams, thanks for joining us tonight and getting us excited about what's going on there at Peg TV. I think there's lots of untapped potential that looks like it's getting ready to burst wide open.
Yeah, we're very excited. We're ready to go.
Great.
Thank you.
Xavier, did, do you have any parents with you tonight? By any chance?
Did you drive?
Yeah, did you drive?
Would you like, would you like to introduce them?
Okay, I have my mom over there, right there. I'm glad my dad could come because he's a fireman. And he's right there, over there. I have my grandma right in the middle, my cousin and my aunt. And she's not part of my family, but it's great to see her. Senior Estrada, all the way up there. That's all my family.
Your entourage?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you all for joining us tonight and supporting Xavier. And Xavier, thank you for your, for your work on Peg TV. We're looking forward to more stories from you.
Yep.
Absolutely. Dr. Shiflett?
Critically important to our division, as critically important as communication, is looking at how do we develop as an organization? And so tonight we'll be giving you a report on our organizational learning plan.
Good evening, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. Ladies and gentlemen, this will be a team effort between the Office of Curriculum and Instruction and organizational development. This evening, just to give you a brief overview, we will be looking at our division core values, some of the statutory requirements, briefly highlight critical parts of our strategic plan. I'll turn it over to Ms. Joan Davis, who will talk about our organizational development cycle, the tiered approach that we use to professional development, some of our delivery options, and then a highlight of the organizational development plan, which you do have at your seat. We highlighted the core values because if you look at the value of excellence, you'll notice that continuous improvement is highlighted. And in order for us to have continuous improvement, we have to constantly be learning. And additionally, under professionalism, maintaining competence speaks to ongoing training and again, learning. There are many requirements that I think many people are not familiar with. There are federal statutory requirements for professional development in the Elementary, Secondary and Education Act of 1965, currently known as No Child Left Behind. Title IX, Section 9101, Paragraph IV spells out in tremendous detail professional development requirements. And because the Commonwealth of Virginia does accept federal dollars, we have Title I funds, we receive Title II Part A funds and Title III funds. We are obligated to also meet the federal requirements as they are outlined for professional development. And that statute is included in the appendix in the organizational development plan. There are state requirements for professional development. The Code of Virginia, Standards of Quality, Standard Five, we just highlighted just a few there. The full Standard Five is included in the appendix of the organizational development plan. But it says each school board shall provide teachers and principals with high-quality professional development programs each year, annually review its professional development program for quality, effectiveness, participation and relevancy. And that's, those are just highlighted from Standard Five. Additionally, in the administrative code, local school authorities shall develop continuing in-service training programs. When you look at the contract and the Standards of Quality doesn't focus on the total organization, this part really is on the staff who hold instructional certification and licenses. But a standard 10-month contract for teachers is really 200 days. And it spells out how those 200 days should be utilized with up to 20 days for activities such as participating in professional development. The administrative code also requires ongoing professional development for people to remain licensed to teach or to serve as administrators. When we move to the local level, you will see that we have one policy regulation that I wanted to highlight, last revised November 7th, 2012, which also reiterates the requirements in the code regarding the 200-day contract, that 180 days are the minimum requirements for instruction, but 11 days for activities such as teaching or in-service training, three days for professional development. And then there are additional six days that can be used for any of those activities. So again, you can see that there are mandates for professional development. Tonight on your deliberation first read agenda, you will see a new policy, GCL, proposed by the Virginia School Boards Association. And we are recommending that this policy be included in our policy manual for Hampton City Schools because it codifies the requirement for all instructional personnel to participate in professional development. But more importantly, it enumerates the specific types of training that the Code of Virginia requires that we provide to instructional personnel. When we move to division strategic plan, Goal Four specifically says attract, develop and retain exceptional staff. The strategic objective under that goal is to build staff capacity, which includes learning systems that develop the knowledge, skills and abilities of all staff. So while the Code of Virginia focuses specifically on our core business of teaching and learning and requirements for training for instructional personnel, our strategic plan focuses on the entire organization. And so that strategic objective is for all staff. Some of the key performance indicators that were included with Goal Four are listed, increasing the percentage of highly qualified teachers, increasing the number of national boards, national board certified teachers as well, are a couple of the critical key performance indicators there. Additionally, when we did our strategic planning survey that over 1,800 people responded to, including staff and the community, we asked about the financial priorities that should be drivers of our strategic plan. Attract and retain quality staff and provide training to keep staff skilled and competent. When we asked the open-ended question of what would delight you, the number one response was staff each classroom with a knowledgeable, skilled and compassionate teacher. So we've highlighted for you all of the instances where the training and development of staff is critical to the work that we do. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Joan Davis because this is the world that she lives in and she'll begin by providing an overview of the organizational development cycle.
Thank you. This is the three-tiered pieces to it. A needs assessment, the organizational development plan and evaluation, and this is a continuous cycle. The, the needs assessment, we've got to look at our student performance data and we've got to look at our key, key performance indicators. We're analyzing and prioritizing at each school and each department so that we can figure out exactly what our priorities should be. Then after we've looked at the school and department, we want to combine all of that into a, a plan so that we can look at the, at everything that's coming in and say, you know, what's the most important? What are the things that we really need? And then how are we going to get those? Looking at what things are needed for all employee group, some of it's driven by statute, some of it's driven by the data that we have. We have lots of different reasons that these things are going to come up to the top and say, this is something we absolutely must provide training for. And of course, our, the state, the DOE gives us guidelines on things that we have to provide training. And that will create an organizational development plan for the entire division. It will help us work smarter, I think. We also need to evaluate everything that we're doing. We're using Tom Guskis' five levels of professional development evaluation. We have always been really good at looking at participants' reactions. Did they like the training? Was it too hot, too cold? Did we provide food? But looking at the five levels there and then what are we going to use with that information? This, why are we going to use it to redesign programs or are we just going to get information? So we feel like we're really looking at what we're going to do. One of them to improve organizational support. We did this when we started PLC. We needed to get everybody, top of the school division, from the school board all the way down, to say, yes, PLC is very, very important to us and put support and resources into that PLC. So that's part of the evaluation process. We also look, and Pat said very clearly, that one thing, the, the laws lots of times say that it's your instructional personnel. The nice thing about Hampton City Schools is that we care about all employees and want all employees to have the skills to do their jobs appropriately. So we have universal training. There are things that all of our employees need. It could be OSHA, it could be the AUP policy. There's a variety of things that all employees must have. But then we have targeted and sometimes that might be third-grade teachers who have new language arts SOLs. It might be that we have an HVAC maintenance man who needs to have his certification. There are just all kinds of things that we have, that we look at division-wide. We also have some people in our division who are the only person in that position. They're single-income positions. We need to make sure that they have the training necessary to allow them to do their jobs well. And then sometimes just select individuals need a little more mentoring, a little more help, and we're there to do those things. We have a number of different delivery options and this is where we also want to work smarter. We have done a lot of running around from school to school and place to place, giving the same workshop over and over. So now we need to look at the blended, which is online and face-to-face, conferences, coursework, having it jambed embedded, helping it, helping it happen during the day, using a lot of webinars. We need to be able to produce something and then have teachers be able to go back to see it. Or other, every employee should be able to go back and say, I need to refocus on this. I thought I understand how to do, understood how to do this and I really need a little more help. So that's something we can do. This is interesting on, on the plan. This is, the whole plan is to help the school division, all of us to meet all of our goals. It involves everyone and it helps to identify all the skills that each group of people need to do their job well. And it fosters the development of learning communities so that we can learn together and work better and be cooperative and just, it makes it a lot more, makes a lot more sense. So here's our saying, without continual growth and progress, such words as improvement, achievement and success have no meaning. achievement, and success have no meaning." Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Questions or comments from board members? Mr. Harper?
Very good report, Ms. Davis. I'm just curious, we do an excellent job of attracting teachers with a very attractive first-year salary with no experience. On the retention part, retaining those same people, while it's not our fault because we still care and try to grow the professional teacher to the levels you just figured out, but how do you take somebody that's from Muscatine, Iowa, that comes here to the East Coast just to build a resume for them?
I'm from Iowa.
I used to work there. I guess it's not so much a question, it is a comment, that we do, and I guess all the schools just experience the same thing, teachers come, get a year's experience, and then they're gone because of whatever reason, didn't like the area, or the kids were too much, or whatever. They were trying to get back home with some experience and a nice base salary. So I guess there are no numbers kept on how many teachers we transition, we turn over every year?
Yes, we do have that. We do have that. We track, when Sue Lively was here, we always made sure that we tracked how many new teachers we had coming in with zero years' experience and how many were staying. Some of the things that we found, after three years, if they did come in on a provisional license, some of them had not met, yet met the requirements, but we have a pretty, actually a pretty good retention rate with our new teachers. So we can get you that data, and so if you could see what it is, we've got it for, again, for this year.
Thank you, dear. No need for that. I'm aware, I see it in our personnel reports.
Additional questions, comments, Mrs. Henry? Thank you for the, all the rationale and behind it, and I think people don't realize that if teachers are teaching in a classroom 180 days, they're really doing all that other work the rest of the time, and it is a lot like work. I think successful organizations put 10% of their budget into development and training. You know, that's the rule of thumb, and we don't give you 10% of our budget to do this with, and I'm just always amazed at how much you can accomplish with creativity and a shared approach to things. And I think the biggest bang for our buck we've ever gotten is the professional learning communities where teachers are learning together because they see a point to what they're doing, and they're sharing the responsibility, and they have somebody else down the hall they can go ask when the new idea doesn't pan out just the way they thought it would. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you. Our last report for the evening is on the VRS Hybrid Retirement Plan and the Virginia Local Disability Plan, an update on that. We have experienced a number of changes over the last couple of years in the Virginia retirement system, and Ms. Robyn Ruth and Susie Scott will be presenting this information to us.
Good evening. Hold on one second. We are going to start off with some information. Susie has information on the Hybrid Retirement Plan.
I'm going to talk retirement, she's going to talk disability. As you know, over the last few years, VRS has been reinventing itself a little bit because they have realized that the traditional defined benefit plan that they've had for years is getting very expensive to maintain. So we had a couple of years ago, the introduction, I guess three years ago, the introduction of Plan Two. They started talking about the traditional, the original VRS Retirement Plan is Plan One, and the new Retirement Plan is Plan Two. And what they did was made some tweaks to the actual eligibility for it, the multiplier, how old you had to be, the years of service, things like that, the age for full retirement. Now what they're doing is they're going to yet a third plan, and they are calling this the Hybrid Plan, and it's a hybrid because it is a combination of a defined benefit and a defined contribution plan. All employees that are hired as of January 1st, 2014, who have no prior VRS service credit will automatically be covered under the Hybrid Plan. If you are a Plan One or a Plan Two employee, you have the option to switch to the Hybrid Plan if you do so between January 1st and April 30th of next year. What's different? Employees can contribute up to 9% of their earnings pre-tax into the Hybrid Plan. It also provides a new disability program. The state currently offers what they call the Virginia State Disability Plan. We're going to have the Virginia Local Disability Plan, which is modeled after, obviously, the VSDP. All right, so you might ask, hybrid, defined benefit, defined contribution, what exactly does that mean? In a traditional defined benefit plan, your benefit, your monthly benefit at retirement is guaranteed. The risk is on the employer, and it's based on a formula that figures in your average final compensation, a multiplier factor, and your years of service. And based on those very specific factors, you're guaranteed a benefit monthly until you die. In a defined contribution plan, the risk shifts to the employee, and the employee and the employer are putting in contributions that are invested, just like many of you may invest in a 403B plan or some other investment plan, the stock market, whatever. And the risk is on the employee to sort of ensure that the performance of that investment is sufficient that at retirement, and that they're putting in enough contributions, that at retirement, they have enough of a benefit to sustain them. So contributions to the Hybrid Plan. The defined benefit portion of the Hybrid Plan requires a mandatory 4% contribution by the employee. The defined contribution part requires a mandatory 1% from the employee. So there's the minimum 5%, which is the same as the Plan One and Plan Two members are required to pay, the 5%. The employer portion for all three plans is actuarially determined and will not be any more for the Hybrid Plan than it is for the current Plan One or Plan Two. So the employer will not have to pay any more for their share than they do currently for the Plan One or Plan Two. In addition to the 5% mandatory contribution that the Hybrid employees make, they can also make additional optional contributions. The first 1% optional contribution is matched 100%, in other words, another 1% from the employer. There's an additional 3% optional that the employee can contribute that's matched at half that rate or a half a percent. So in total, the employee can contribute a maximum of 9% of their earnings towards the Hybrid Plan. The employer can match up to 3.5% plus what they're required to put in as the actuarial value. All right, so what does this look like at retirement? How is it different? For the Plan Two or the Plan One, and I have to tell you, these slides come from a VRS presentation, so we weren't able to make any changes. They have shown only Plan Two and Plan One non-vested. If you are a Plan One traditional, your benefit would be a little bit higher than the Plan Two and Plan One non-vested, just because the multiplier is higher for a traditional Plan One. So the total payment would be a little bit more. But the income replacement is based on Social Security. The green part of the bar, the 43.8%, is assuming that you're getting your Social Security benefit at your full Social Security retirement age. The 45.8% in blue is your defined benefit under either Plan Two, well, under Plan Two, because if you're a Plan One non-vested member, you have the same benefits as a Plan Two person. So that's the, that brings you to an 89.7% income replacement value. Under the Hybrid Plan, if you put in only the minimum, the 5% for your entire career, you'd be looking at the same 43.8% Social Security, but you'd be at 32% income replacement from your Hybrid Plan benefit, which would give you 75.9. If you put in the max 9% plus the employer matching for your whole career, and all of this assumes 30 years of service at age 67, you'd be back up to about where the Plan Two people are at 89.6%. But again, it requires putting in the maximum for your whole career. Same scenario, only this is looking at age 67 with 37 years of service. You're at slightly over 100% for your defined benefit, your guaranteed benefit under Plan Two. The Hybrid Plan at the minimum contribution would bring you to 82.82%, and the Hybrid, if you'd contributed the max, would bring you to 108.5%. So under their scenario, you come out the best in the Hybrid at 37 years of service and maximum contribution all 37 years, which I don't think is very realistic, but they're trying to give you the low and the high. All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Robyn. She's going to talk to you about the disability portion.
The other big portion or big change that employees will be seeing effective January 1, 2014, is the required participation in the Virginia Local Disability Plan. The Virginia Local Disability Plan, or VLDP, is a very specific income protection or disability insurance program that will be offered through the state. School divisions and localities have the option to opt out of the VLDP program and participate in their own comparable plan. In order to explore other options, Dr. Shiflett has requested permission from the state to explore other opportunities, and we have received permission to do so, and we have until November 1st to make a decision. What I'm going to be telling you about tonight with the Virginia Local Disability Plan is whether we go with VLDP or we go with an outside provider, these are the requirements that we will have to meet. Obviously, VLDP meets them. Any outside vendor that we look at would have to have a comparable plan. So that's why we're just going to focus on the VLDP requirements tonight, and then later in the fall, we'll be coming back to you with a recommendation to either stay with the VLDP or to opt out and go with an outside vendor. It's very important to realize that our decisions are irrevocable. We have the opportunity to participate with VLDP. This is a one-time-only option. If we opt to go with somebody else, we will not be able to get back on their plan. In terms of what it is, it's income protection if the employee can't work, and this would cover them whether it's a work-related or non-work-related illness or injury. And it focuses on assisting employees with recovery, and this is something that our current disability plan does not focus on, but something that, in conversations that Susie and I have had, we are both very interested in looking at this in terms of working with employees to get them back to work in a faster fashion. In terms of who is covered, it's employees who are new to VRS as of January 1, 2014, or existing employees who opt into the Hybrid Plan during the open enrollment period. And you have to be in, you have to opt into both. If you're a current Plan One or Plan Two employee, and you think you're interested in just the disability, you can't opt into just the disability portion. You have to be in the Hybrid Plan in terms of the retirement portion and a member of the disability plan. So they go together, kind of one and the same. Excuse me, in terms of what the plan covers, there are two components to it. There's a short-term disability component, which covers employees for the first 125 days of an illness or an injury. It's approximately six months. And any sort of illness or injury, and the income replacement is, starts off at 100%, and there's a graduated scale, and it will, by the end of that six-month period, it will be at a 60% of whatever their base income is. There is a one-year waiting period for VLDP, so if I'm hired on January 2nd, 2014, I cannot, if I have an injury prior to January 2nd, 2015, I will not be able to utilize the VLDP. We are planning, and I'm probably talking ahead on one of the slides, but we are planning to offer employees the opportunity to participate in our current disability plan so that they would have, for that first year, so they'd have coverage. Also, premiums for this will be paid for by the employer, which is different. Our current disability plan is covered strictly, payments are covered strictly by the employees. This will make a difference when it comes to payouts, because as employees, we don't pay the premiums for our disability, or we do pay the premiums for our disability insurance. If we receive a payout, that income is not taxed. Moving forward, if I am a Hybrid Plan employee and Hampton City Schools is paying the premium for my disability insurance, any payments that I received will be taxed. So that will be a significant difference. If I am out for 125 days, I automatically roll over into long-term disability insurance, and I would continue on that until I'm eligible for Medicare, yeah, Medicare, or I am able to return to work. Or, yes, or I die. One of those three, that is what it says. And this would apply to either a work-related or a non-work-related condition. Once I roll over into long-term disability insurance, it stays at 60% of my income, and I cease to be a Hampton City Schools employee. I roll over onto the books of the long-term disability carrier. They will continue to make a 1% mandatory contribution to the defined contribution plan, but that is all paid for by the VLDP trust fund. But they automatically cease to be our employees when they roll into long-term disability. In terms of the rates, teachers, and teachers is a little misleading. Teachers include teachers, administrators, secretaries, basically everybody but bus drivers, some of the folks, some of our mechanics, so some of the maintenance folks, yeah, and some of our full-time cafeteria workers. And the cost for the Hybrid payroll only, so if we have 10 teachers that are new between January 1 and we'll say June 30th, we would only use the payroll for those 10 employees to determine what we pay to the state, and we'd have to pay 39 cents on the dollar. For anybody, any full-time employees that fall into other groups, so bus drivers, maintenance, some of our cafeteria workers, we actually pay 91 cents on the dollar for the Hybrid payroll only. These rates are effective through June 30th, 2014, and the new rates will be set each In terms of implications for Hampton City Schools, we will be adding funding for VLDP or if we go with an outside carrier, whichever route we go, we will have to add funding for the budget for FY '15. We are going to allow Hybrid employees to elect HCS disability insurance to cover that one-year waiting period. We will be coming forward with some policy changes. We have not, there are several in the areas, there will be some in terms of leave, some in terms of payroll, so you'll see quite a few of those in the next probably six months. We will also have to update Oracle to support the differences in not only the retirement plans, but the disability plans, so that will add to the budget. And at some point in time, you may see us coming forward with a request for additional staffing to support, and this is not just the Hybrid Plan, but with VRS modernization, balancing Plan One, Plan Two, and Hybrid Plans, managing VLDP and the Affordable Care Act, kind of all three of those, or well, four or five of them all at once. Act, kind of all three of those, or well, four or five of them all at once, you may see some requests for additional staffing. Questions about either the retirement portion or the disability plan?
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Questions from board members? Mrs. Henry?
We, if we don't opt for the Virginia plan now, we are locked out.
Correct. And it's irrevocable either way. If we opt, if we say that we want to participate in VLDP, we're in it for life.
You can't escape.
You cannot. There is no escaping. But if we opt to go with an external provider, there is no getting into the plan moving forward. It's irrevocable until they change their minds.
Wonderful. So instead of being just at the mercy of the market, you're at the mercy of the bureaucrats too. Do they have any idea, all the little guys with their actuarial tables, how this would affect costs for workman's comp? I mean, I'm assuming you're still going to have to make all the, since this covers like any disability insurance employees might have now, it covers both work-related and non-work-related disabilities. But if it's in existence and it's there, it would seem to me that it might have some effect on workman's comp claims if you've got enough people who are actually participating. Have they implied that somehow this, instead of just costing us lots more money, might save money?
We have not, I have not heard any discussions to that effect. We have been talking to the folks in the city to figure out how we may coordinate some of these efforts. Particularly with workers' comp because the city does handle all of our workers' comp claims. And one important thing with the one-year waiting period, the one-year waiting period does not apply to work-related injuries. So if I'm hired January second, two thousand and fourteen, and I slip and fall in the building on January fifteenth, it will be covered immediately by workers' comp. But if I slip and fall while I'm skiing on January fifteenth, I'm out of luck. It won't cover that, only if it's a work-related injury.
Don't ski.
Yeah.
This is mandatory for us. It's voluntary participation for employees?
No, they, no.
If we opt to do this, then we have to cover all of our employees?
No, it's not an option. We have to cover them.
We have to cover them.
We, the only choice is whether or not we go with the state plan or whether we opt to find a comparable plan, excuse me, a comparable plan with an external vendor.
But we are required by legislation to provide this coverage to the hybrid employees.
We will all provide this. I love it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Thank you, Ms. Scott, Ms. Ruth.
Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett?
That concludes our reports. But I think, as you can see, we are going to have a very complex issue to deal with in terms of making sure that our employees understand it. And additionally, this is one of the first things that is going to impact our next year's budget, our upcoming budget in FY fifteen. So, you know, and as we go forward each year, greater numbers of people will be under this new plan. And so it'll be something that we will be looking at for a number of years in the future. And I know it was a lot to jest tonight. And so we will be coming back with you, to you with additional information, much like we do when we make other changes and we look at the budget and we're making recommendations. We'll bring forth some actual scenarios of individuals so that you can see how it works.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. We move on to the hearing of any delegations or the presentation of any written communications or petitions. Speakers are required to limit comments to a maximum of five minutes in accordance with school board policy BDDH. Ms. Bowers, would you share the protocol?
Yes. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. The first speaker I have tonight is Barbara Pitt-Mason. Good evening.
Good evening, school board members, superintendent, and others. My name is Barbara Pitt-Mason. I am a substitute teacher with the Hampton City Schools. And I am coming to you tonight to ask you to consider a liaison committee between the substitute teachers and the liaisons against the administration. One of the reasons that I'm bringing you to your attention is that right now, for these substitute teachers, we meet once a month and discuss concerns that we have as substitute teachers going into the school system from elementary, middle, and high. Right now, there is no liaison, there is no steps or procedures of the concerns that which we have that we give to the administration. So one of the things that I'm bringing to the board is to set up a liaison committee that will be the concerns of the substitute teachers and that will work with the administration on solving situations or also enhancing the substitute teachers within the school system. Presently, we have four hundred-plus substitute teachers, which is either degrees or non-degrees. And one of the things that I want you to be, understand is that I was selected to be the face, but I want to make sure you understand that what we want is a voice to, so that we can base our concerns to the administration. And I want to do it in a very professional manner, and I want to be able to bring those concerns in written forms and whatnot, and also be able to respond back to the other substitute teachers. Given example, one of the things that we see as substitute teachers is that, as the young lady stated, there are federal, state, and local training that the teachers must go through. We, as substitute teachers, are the ones that step in to, so that the teachers can attend their training. I want to make sure that all of the substitute teachers not only is equipped, but actually do an excellent job while the absent of the teacher. And in some cases, some of the teachers are, some of the subs are reporting that they don't have enough lesson plans and different things of that nature. So instead of actually not having a formal way of setting the complaints or concerns or matters, I call them challenges and whatnot, we can have a committee that they can come to and bring all those concerns to. And then the administration or the superintendent can set a liaison person that we can work with. And then we can make the transitional for everybody a better one. And I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you very much for listening to me, and I really hope that you will take this under consideration because, again, our kids are our future, and we need to do everything we can possibly to assist them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pitt-Mason. Dr. Shiflett, can I refer this to you? And we have your contact information, and so the administration will take a look into your comments and suggestions and give you some feedback in a later day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. We move on to other items for action, starting with item seven-point-zero-one on the agenda, approval of sole source authorization.
Madam Chair, I move approval of item seven-point-zero-one, approval of sole source authorization.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve sole source authorization. Is there any discussion?
Yes, it was moved by me.
What did I say, Smith? It was moved by Mrs. Phillips. Madam Clerk. Is there any discussion other than that detail? Okay. If not, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Item seven-point-zero-two is VSBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt the VSBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members for two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen.
It was moved by Mr. Kilgore. And who was that second?
Mrs. Henry.
Thank you. Didn't sound like you. Mrs. Henry, was seconded by Mrs. Henry that we adopt the VSBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members for two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and all members signed that document earlier this evening. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Item seven-point-zero-three is a certification of closed meeting of June seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Madam Chair, I move approval of item seven-point-zero-three, certification of the closed meeting of June seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
It's moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we approve the certification of the closed meeting of June seventeen, two thousand and thirteen. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Item seven-point-zero-four, joint resolution approving lease agreement for facilities at NHREC for children with disabilities. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the joint resolution approving the lease agreement for facilities at New Horizons Regional Education Center for children with disabilities.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Harper that we approve the joint resolution approving lease agreement for facilities at the New Horizons Regional Education Center. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Items seven-point-zero-five through seven-point-zero-nine are revisions to school board policies. Is there a motion with respect to those?
Madam Chair, I move we approve action items seven-point-zero-five through seven-point-zero-nine.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Phillips that we approve items seven-point-zero-five through seven-point-zero-nine. They include the revision of school board policy IG E, adult education, the deletion of school board policy IG EC, adult occupational education, revision of school board policy JEDB, student dismissal precautions, revision of school board policy LB, which is the education agency relations, formerly relations with other schools and school districts, and finally, the revision of school board policy JECB, admission of non-resident students. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to items for deliberation, we begin with item eight-point-zero-one. Are there any questions or comments from board members regarding item eight-point-zero-one, which is the resolution, I'm sorry, I thought I was on a policy, resolution to adopt the member agreement to join the Virginia Association of Counties Group Self-Inurance Risk Pool? We have, Dr. Hellman, will you be speaking to that?
I certainly can, Madam Chair. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Congratulations to you and Mr. Kilgore on your reelections as chair and vice chair.
Thank you.
The period that ran through June thirtieth, we're in cooperation with the Office of Risk Management to take care of our insurance needs. That covers all lines of insurance, property, workers' comp, liability, basically the whole kit and caboodle insuring the bus fleet and everything. Previously, several of those lines of insurance, particularly the liability and the workers' comp, had been covered through the VSBA pool. As Ms. Reeves has indicated in her cover letter, the VSBA Executive Board voted to merge into the VA-CO or the Virginia Association of Counties Self-Inurance Risk Pool, which is now called VA-COR. And they will pick up those lines of insurance that we had currently with the VSBA. We have been assured through the writings that the coverages are going to be at least the same, if not enhanced, and we may see, in fact, some reduction of premium in those lines. Of course, as my father used to say, seeing is believing. But in order to move forward, we would recommend that the resolution contained within the packet be approved, and that would then authorize the superintendent to move forward into the agreement so that we could participate and be a member of that pool.
Questions from board members? Mrs. Henry?
Okay. The SBA insurance pool will cease to exist as a separate entity and will be, all those members will simply now be members of the county self-insurance pool?
Those members that choose to go forward.
Okay. And the others will just dissipate?
Find coverages elsewhere.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. Mr. Kilgore?
When does that transfer occur? I know they approved it June twenty-seventh, but when does the actual transfer of coverage occur? It's my, my understanding it occurred July one. So is... But the VA-COR is granting jurisdictions because of the suddenness with which this all came about, they are granting boards the opportunity to have some time to go forward and adopt these resolutions. Is there a need or a benefit to try to move this from deliberation to action tonight? If the board is comfortable, it would certainly be a benefit, at least to get our paperwork in and to begin the processes and to make for a smoother transition. If the board is comfortable, we would certainly have no problem with you all adopting that this evening.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Dr. Hellman.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Is there a motion with respect to moving this item forward?
Yes, I think, Madam Chairman, I think Mr. Kilgore makes a good point, and I would move that we change, amend the agenda to move item formerly eight-point-o-one to our action agenda for this evening.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we move item eight-point-zero-one from deliberation to action. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Uh-uh.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, we have moved that item...
You want to take care of it now?
From, yes.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the resolution, the member agreement to join the Virginia Association of Counties Group Self-Inurance Risk Pool.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we adopt the resolution of the member agreement to join Virginia Association of Counties Group Self-Inurance Risk Pool. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 8.02, which is the V P S A Resolution. I'm waiting for my computer to catch up. Dr. Helman? Hello. Would you like to speak to us about this resolution?
Yes, ma'am. The V P S A Resolution that's included in your packet tonight is one that's been on an annual basis. I think it goes back to somewhere around 1996 or so, when the General Assembly tried to establish a predictable funding stream for technology for local school divisions. They provide that stream through the sale of bonds each spring. And with the bond regulations, the localities can actually go forward and procure the equipment and infrastructure necessary prior to the sale of those bonds. These are funds that have been budgeted in our FY '14 annual budget. However, because of the fact that the bonds will not be sold until 2014, this body needs to declare its intent to reimburse itself with the proceeds of those bonds in order to be in compliance. We have included in the memo the fact that, you know, we have 30 schools at $26,000 per school. The division receives $50,000. And then we have seven supplemental grants for Aberdeen, Andrews, Bassett, Bryan, Cary, Hampton High, and Machen. So the total award is $1,012,000, or the total grant funding is $1,012,000. And we would recommend that this be approved. It is on your deliberation agenda. You have 60 days. You can, you can backdate 60 days. So if you wait until the first meeting in August, it would be no problem. So...
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Helman. Any questions from board members regarding the V P S A? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will take that up on our agenda at our first meeting in August. Item 8.03 is new school board policy L C, Charter Schools and L C dash E, Charter School Application Addendum. We had presentation of this particular item to us at last week's meeting. Are there any questions or comments from board members regarding this policy? Mrs. Smith?
Didn't know who wanted to go first. I have a few questions. One with, I believe we talked about this a little bit at the work session last time. And with the one policy L C, we talked about the review team. And I see where we updated that from charter school proponent to Hampton resident. But the impression here is that a review team will have already been established. Are we going to be establishing a review team right after this policy's set? Or is it something that we establish once an application actually comes in? Or...
I don't believe that the, Nancy, the code, it doesn't state any particular time that you have to have the review team set up.
Correct, and you can actually do it either way. You could go ahead and have the, sort of a skeleton idea of who you wanted on your review team, and then upon an application, make certain that you can convene that team. But you could also have one that you, you know, you just routinely appoint year after year. But whether or not they'll have any work is...
Right. There'll be a core people that would always be on any kind of review team for charter. But then depending upon the type of charter, you may want some highly specialized individuals to be on that team.
So there would be some core people that would know about charter schools, and then we wouldn't just be starting off cold with, okay?
I mean, when you look at the different components that are required in the actual application, I think you can very easily see that there are certain individuals that must be on the review team. I mean, for example, we would absolutely have to have somebody from finance, somebody from the H R perspective, somebody from instruction. And so, you know, as we go through and identify those people, I mean, it comes quite easy to determine who's going to be on the review team. But then I think when you get the actual application, you may want to include some specialized individuals.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Also, on page four of that same policy, L C under personnel, it talks about personnel could be employees of the school board or could not, you know, depending on how the charter is. And then that second paragraph talks about professional licensed employees currently employed by the school board may volunteer for assignment to the charter school. I would think that paragraph only applies if personnel are actually employees of the school board. Is that, I know I'm jumping right in there, but I'm thinking the beginning of that paragraph needs to start with, if the personnel are employees of the school board, then all that applies. Or not?
I think, I think the code says that this stuff applies anyway. Whoever they hire is, is also an employee of the school system in that they receive the same benefits as someone not assigned to a charter school.
So they would?
And, yes.
That's where I was confused. I was thinking, oh, it was a separate charter school and a separate, would they have to have the same? Okay. That answers that one. And then, almost done here? My next is on the L C E. Ms. Reeves, thank you very much for providing that regulation. Looking at that, the regulation gives very detailed information about the application and how to apply. And this policy here seems to also say applicant information, list your name. It seems to imply that this also is giving application information, and it doesn't really reference the regulation. So I was just thinking that in this L C E, we should also reference that regulation, to reference that regulation for the actual application procedure, just to make it clear. Because it looks like two different places for an application, and that needs to be referenced. That's all.
And so your suggestion is that it be listed in this policy?
Yeah, somewhere in this policy, L C E, that it says, follow application process per the regulation.
Like a cross-reference?
Either as a cross-reference or in the body of it or something, yeah. Yeah. Either way.
Ms. Reeves, can you handle that detail?
I can certainly put it as a cross-reference. I can also put it at the end of paragraph two of L C E, where it says applicants must follow the application addendum format provided below, and...
And per regulation, yes, exactly.
Something like...
That would probably be the best place. That's a great idea.
Okay. We can do both, and then I will make it a cross-reference.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if...
I don't know if you cross-reference a regulation or not.
Yeah, I'm not, but we'll make it, we'll make it, I think, well, I'll figure out something. We'll put something at the bottom.
Or just say where it's available.
Exactly.
And not, because it's not necessarily a policy cross-reference.
Correct, but at the bottom of the policy, we'll, we'll say something with that full title of...
Which can be obtained in the office of...
Okay.
Sounds great.
Anything else on that?
I'll let somebody else bring up the fee thing.
Oh.
I think I'm good with the $2,000 in there. I think if we try to go a route of percentages or things like that, we could, we could get really complex pretty quickly. But I will, I will stipulate that $2,000 is a risk on our part, without a doubt. Based on history in the state of Virginia, it can be very expensive to get into a charter school contract agreement.
Anything further on policy L C or L C E? Okay, there being, nothing further on those. We move to item 8.04, Deletion of School Board Policy J K, Employment of Students. Any questions or comments from board members on this policy deletion? There being none, we move to item 8.05, Revision of School Board Policy E E A A, Student Transportation. Any comments or questions from board members on, on policy E E A A, Student Transportation?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. One, I agree with the text change, but the changes that we're putting into this policy are not going to be anything that's reflected in the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook, because that's already gone to print, I'm assuming, or it's past its deadline?
Typically, and I'm sorry, Mr. Grimes is not here, so I can't address the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. This information would basically drive the bus driver's handbook. And they are in the process currently of doing that. And Mr. Benware is making sure that the rights, the, I'm sorry, the student driver handbook is driven by the current policy.
Okay. Where I found difficulty with this policy was not in the new words. I like the new words, but was in some of the words that weren't changed, where as a parent, I'm trying to figure out if I'm reading this policy, whether or not my child receives transportation or not. And I can't get there from this policy. If I'm, if I'm an ESL parent, I'm looking at this saying, I'm not sure how, if I get transportation or not. Say I'm an ESL parent of a middle school student. And then I started thinking about some of our other programs, like the I B program or our career academies, and it almost becomes a research project to try to figure out whether or not I'm eligible for transportation.
One of the, one of the things, Mr. Kilgore, that we're working on, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Benware just recently. When you go to the web query where all of the programs are, you need to put your address in, and you can put the program in. When you go over to the special programs and you click on that, you get a rather lengthy listing of what I'll consider to, or call hieroglyphics.
Yes.
You, you do not have a pass key to determine what is what. So transportation staff is working to establish on that page a key, if you will, for those special programs, so that they can put their address in, have an easily identifiable key for the special program, and then draw that down, and then find out where that stop is.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't put the specificity into the policy itself?
It says magnet programs designated to receive service.
Right, and as a parent, I can go to some of the school websites, and I still can't figure out if I'm a magnet program or if I receive transportation. That's, that's my problem, is that...
That's why when you call the school, you want to have a real person answer.
Until I, until I looked through some of the stuff, you know, the I B program is the way I refer to it, didn't realize it's a magnet program. And then I think, well, is ESL a magnet program? Or, you know, so it, you know, my question relates to why we wouldn't want to be more specific here. And if there's a reasonable answer, I'm fine, but...
Let me just mention that things like ESL, they're placements for students. It's where they get their education, much like the gifted students who attend Spratly. So it's not really a magnet program.
So, so is that addressed in this policy? I don't think we address placement programs in this policy.
Well, to, to try to specifically answer your question, I think that the answer would be, we can take this policy to whatever level of specificity the board would desire. Generally, you know, it's always been my thoughts that you would want to keep your policy at a high level so that when little changes or changes are made in operational matters, you wouldn't necessarily always have to go back to the policy and change it.
I agree.
But we can, we can take it to, to whatever level and...
Well, I think right now, the only changes that we've seen are changes to Cooper and Jones.
That's correct.
But I guess what I want to say is, though, because I, I think it's important that these words get into the bus driver's handbook, I don't want to stop this policy because of any kind of a major rework. So I guess my recommendation would be to deliberate the changes that are there now, but maybe consider in the future, trying to make some clarifications about placement schools or, or magnet programs in general. Because I don't think they change much over time. I mean, it's been a fairly significant thing for us to discuss changes to Cooper and Jones. I mean, it took two years to finally make that change.
Dr. Johnson?
Mr. Kilgore, for the board, we do have a section on our webpage that says educational, unique, and special programs, that provide descriptors for each of those programs, that anyone interested in any of those, what we discussed is making sure that the transportation that is or is not provided is explicit. One of the suggestions that we toyed around with is just as in the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, we have a little telephone that lets people know that certain offenses get reported to law enforcement, that we could put buses next to those programs, a little bus icon that indicated that these special programs do have transportation. And where that icon is not listed, and a statement is not there, that those programs don't. So I went through, I'm reading through this. We talked about making sure it's really clear. When a parent clicks on Armstrong School for the Arts or I B Hampton High, and I'm looking at that right now, and it says, "Transportation is provided to and from schools." It's the last line after the description. But we have our educational, unique programs listed that is a link for parents, and they can see a descriptor of each of those programs, and it says whether or not transportation is provided to and from school.
I'll just comment to that slightly, because sometimes people don't necessarily equate programs with school buildings. And they go straight to, let's just say, for example, Cooper's website or Hampton High School's website or whatever. So I think maybe the information you're talking about there that is appropriately listed under programs and special programs, but that we also have that information embedded at the school level so that it can be...
We'll make sure that that's, that helps, so that people are not confused.
Mrs. Henry?
Just as an aside, the little program that tells you where your bus stop is, is not functioning right now. I had this conversation with transportation today, because I got a beautiful map of the school zone and showed my address and where the school was, and didn't read the bus, the bus stops, didn't show it at all. And when I conferred with transportation, they said, no, it wasn't showing up for them either. But I got, I was told where the bus stop was by Bill, who said, you know, it's down the corner. But in any event, that's, I know they know they're working on it. And program technology is always great when it works. Needs to start working pretty soon.
Anything, anything further on policy E E A A?
So does...
So does Cooper and Jones need to be added to this policy, as ones that don't provide transportation, just like Eaton and Tucker Caps and Armstrong are spelled out in here?
That's up to the board, if you wish to do that. They are magnet programs. Eaton is a fundamental school. Tucker Caps is a fundamental school, and Armstrong is a fundamental school. And I think that the differential there was that there was, it was an implicit policy decision that fundamental schools would not receive transportation. The magnet schools, conversely, had been receiving transportation up until the 14, the 13-14 school year, where we've agreed to do away with them, which is what drove the change in the verbiage under the magnet schools, to say, "Transportation will be provided for students enrolled in magnet programs designated to receive services." The implication there is that Cooper and Jones are not designated to receive services.
Yeah, I think it's sort of like an implication. It's not real clear where, maybe it should just say specifically, Cooper and Jones, unless designated to receive services, transportation's not available.
We'll be more than happy to...
It's just vague the way it's written here. Just might as well just put it out there and say, "These schools," because, again, a lot of parents might not realize this is a magnet school versus a fundamental school versus whatever.
So will you add those?
We'll certainly make that change.
That would be great. Thank you.
Anything further from board members on this particular policy? Thank you, Dr. Hellman.
Thank you.
We'll move now to deliberation first read. Joyfully, we only have four items under this. Item 9.01, New School Board Policy GCL, Professional Staff Development. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Just by way of a brief summary, we presented the recommendation for this policy. It is written and proposed by VSBA, and one that we embrace, because it enumerates what the Code of Virginia requires us to do. And more importantly, at the General Assembly added an additional training requirement, which is Roman numeral five, that we had to provide professional development designed to educate school board employees about bullying and the need to create a bully-free environment. All the other areas that you see in that policy have always been requirements, but the General Assembly did add that we must educate school board employees about bullying and the need to create a bully-free environment. So it is a state mandate that this be part of our professional development program as well. And this provides a way for us to monitor, as we're developing our learning, organizational learning plan, the activities. It's a checklist for us to go back to to make sure that we are offering training and learning opportunities in the areas that the state has mandated.
Questions for Dr. Johnson for clarification on this particular policy revision? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We move now to items 9.02, 9.03, and 9.04. And I believe, Mr. Eagle, you are up on those policies. So we will start with Revision of School Board Policy GBBB, which is Acceptable Use Policy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you are aware, we are required to review and reapprove our acceptable use policies every two years. And so this is, it's been two years since we've done this last. We've taken the opportunity, looking back at, in particular with GBBB, looking at the updated VSBA policy, to actually draft this more in line with what they recommend. It's actually a very good model that they have. And so you actually only see, in addition to us also being consistent with our other policies and using the division, for example, and those sorts of changes to be consistent, that we have eliminated completely Part II and Part III. And the reason for that is Part II really relates to links to other websites using our systems, and it's, actually, it's not in the VSBA recommendation, it almost doesn't really belong. And Part III, the employee responsibilities is really redundant. Much of the information that's in there is already included in some shape or fashion, and either other policies are above in Part I. So eliminating Part II and Part III, no longer need a Part I. And also having this shorter, more concise, more likely that people will read it. So, and again, this relates specifically to staff. And so, if there are questions, I'll move on to the others.
Any questions for Mr. Eagle on this one? Okay?
Okay. And likewise, the two that are being recommended for deletion are really forms. And we actually haven't been using those specific forms. And so I think it has been school boards, we use a different form, it has, again, states that a lot of the components of the AUP reiterates those issues that we want employees to be clear on and understand. It's part of our, actually, our equipment arrangement with employees. And so, again, being consistent with what the board has normally done, we're just recommending those for deletion. But we do, in fact, in the AUP, it states that we do have a process for ensuring that people sign a piece of paper that says, "I agree to the terms of the AUP." And then finally, IIBEA. A lot of changes to this, but previously, IIBEA, and again, this relates to students specifically, was really modeled after the acceptable use policy for staff. And I don't think that was terribly effective. And again, it didn't resemble at all what the VSBA had been recommending. So we have adopted their language almost 100% with one change. We actually have included, in less technical language, all of the elements of the AUP as part of the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. So again, there's a process where the students and the parents sign off that they have seen those and have read those. And with that...
Very, very well. Any questions on that IIBEA, which is Acceptable Use Policy, for Mr. Eagle? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We move on to informational items. Item 10.01 has to do with the appointments of boards, of directors, and standing committees. And so this evening, we'll announce that our New Horizons Board Representative will be Mr. Linwood Butch Harper. WHRO Representative will be Mrs. Phyllis Henry. Career and Technical Education Committee will be Mr. Joe Kilgore. Town and Gown Committee will be Mrs. Monica Smith. The Procurement Committee will be Mr. William Dave Pearson. Our VSBA Voting Delegate and Legislative Liaison will be Mrs. Jennifer Phillips. Our VSBA Voting Delegate Legislative Liaison Alternate will be Mr. Joe Kilgore. And also, jumping back up to WHRO, our alternate representative for WHRO will be Mrs. Jennifer Item 10.02 is Notice that Hampton City Schools' policies are available to the public online Our next meeting is scheduled for August the 7th at 6:30 PM in Jones Magnet Middle School Auditorium, right here where we are tonight. And our next work session will be held on August 21, 2013, at 6:30 PM at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. We move on to informational items. Are there any items, Dr. Shiflett?
Just a reminder that the VSBA Conference on Education will be held on Tuesday, July 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 2:15 at the Richmond Marriott.
And anything further from board members, any informational items to share? There being none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Hope you enjoy.